The Citizens Forum, and I've got something I want to tell the Planning Commission members. As you remember, we took up some money to plant trees in memory of Ralph. And Mark has those trees in the ground. And sometime when the weather's a lot better, come up and look. There's a tree out here as you're leaving on the right. There's a row of trees out in there, and one of those is one of the ones we put. There's also a tree at the classroom across the highway there at the high school. And there's also one out at Founder's Park. We thought Founder's Park was a great place to put a tree in Ralph's honor. So sometime when you're out and about, look at those trees. Do we know what kind?
You have red bud over here. You've got a schumard oak at the outdoor classroom. And then you've got a dogwood at Founder's Park.
Great.
Are there plaques?
Each of them would have plaques, yes. One, the dogwood, if you're where the information board is, basically that start of that walking trail, it's there on the left in that kind of large mulched area. That's where the dogwood is. The red bud, as Rita said, is over here by the walking trail. And then the schumard oak is along a path in the outdoor classroom. As you walk around the path, I think it's on the east side of the path, or kind of the east side. Just walk around and make the leap. It's the only shade tree on the property, actually. The rest of them are all ornamental trees, so.
And Dot LaMarche and my wife put one in also somewhere. I don't know where it's at, but.
Okay.
So.
It's dogwood, by the way.
So if you're out and about, when the weather clears up, go by and look at those. Does anybody else have anything in Citizens Forum? Anybody on the Planning Commission?
We do have our disclosure statement that's due to the state by the end of the month, just in case you guys haven't done that yet, like me.
And does anybody in the audience have anything? They'd like to say something that is not part of the agenda item for tonight? If not, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for the December 20th, 2018 meeting.
Did you approve the agenda?
What?
Approval of the agenda?
He's got approval, I'm sorry, approval of the agenda.
Motion approved.
No, we have, don't we have something?
Yeah, we do have one item that we would recommend postponement. That's number seven. They're still not ready in the field because of all this lovely weather we've been having. Hopefully that'll be before you next month.
Move to approve with the amendment.
To the agenda. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't understand. I'm ahead of myself. I'm thinking about the minutes.
That's fine, yeah. I got you.
Okay, now we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for December 20th, 2018. Does anybody have any changes?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Upstaged.
The lady Volscher playing at nine o'clock.
Ah, there you go. Your mind's wandering somewhere else.
So we'll move on really quick here to item number four, approval of roadway improvements at intersection of Kingston Pike and Watt Road, Town of Farragut, applicant.
Good evening. Wow, that's loud. Good evening. I'm Daryl Smith. I'm town engineer. This first item is a project that has been on our plate for quite a while now. Back around five or six years ago, as the Watt Road and Old Stage Road improvements were being done, we realized that lane assignments at this intersection on Watt Road, they're just wrong. They were assigned based on a T-intersection, which is what Watt Road had been for many years. If you're coming south on Watt Road from the interstate, and you're in the, typically the through lane on Watt Road, you're forced to make a right turn. In order to make the through movement, you have to go to the left turn bay. Now, mind you, when we pushed Watt Road from the icearium to Kingston Pike, we just mirrored that. For those of us who are used to that and been driving it for years, it's really, when we think about it, but for someone who is not prepared for that, that doesn't realize they, their GPS is telling them to go to the top of the hill on Watt Road, and they're having to get into the left turn bay to do it. So we wanted to revise that. Now, the project has grown as we've, the more we've looked at it, we wanted to actually improve and to include pedestrian crossings. Because we now have pedestrian facilities on Watt Road all the way to Kingston Pike. We wanted to have sidewalk connection and help you get oriented there. We kind of turned that from the last one. We want to have a right turn lane on Watt Road southbound, so that anyone that is wanting to make a right turn head west on Kingston Pike toward Lenore City certainly has the room to do that. The through movement can continue south on Watt Road, and the left turn bay will have its own movement. So you can see there, we're adding that right turn lane. And the lane assignments will be a lot more normal, more like what people are used to. Now, having this before you tonight is more or less a housekeeping measure. We've discussed this a couple of times in the past. I looked it up, and I think the last time we discussed this was two years ago, in June of 2016. But plans turn in on this, this project is going to be let by TDOT. Plans turn in is actually tomorrow. We're hoping for a March 29th letting through TDOT. They will manage construction of it. And we don't have a construction schedule yet, but we're assuming this can probably be done over the next six months after the letting. So I'll be able to, I can update you later, once TDOT has set the schedule. So staff recommendation is approval.
Anybody have questions or comments?
What does Dixie Lee Liquors think about this changing of their access, Daryl?
Well, you can see on, again, you kind of have to orient yourself, that would be in the lower left corner on that drawing. We are including, moving their driveway from Watt Road into their parking lot around behind their building as opposed to in front of it where it is now. If you drive through that fairly often, that becomes, it's a real problem with people blocking Watt Road right in the middle of the intersection. I've seen, we stood out there for about two hours watching it a year ago, and probably saw five or six near accidents when someone wanted to turn in there and couldn't get across, so everybody stops. This will be a great improvement. Talking with Dixie Lee Liquors, they're happy. They like the idea. They've had, they've taken issue with that entrance for a long time, wanted something done. This is the best that we can do to correct that problem.
One other question, Daryl. On the drawing here, it looks like the crosswalk up by the fire station there, it looks like it's in bowl. Is that, is that going to be redone, that crosswalk up there? I mean, just painted or anything?
We're looking at ways to change that. It won't be done as part of this project.
That was my question.
Okay. There are some issues. The Rural Metro recently contacted us about the fact that when traffic backs up there, sometimes they can block their entrance. That's not a good idea when there's a call out. But we're looking at ways to get around that. We may be moving that mid-block crossing a little bit to the south to put it to the other side of their entrance.
Would it be something to look at, like what we've got on Smith Road where we're coming down to Kingston Pike, where the Wiggles entrance there?
That's what we're looking at doing. Problem is, I really don't like having a mid-block crossing right in the middle of a place where it says, "Do not block intersection." There's just a lot going on, a lot of signs. I prefer to move it away from that.
I'm in a space there to where the cars would stop and leave the fire, the fire lane open.
That's correct. Just like Smith Road at Wiggles.
Well, having the triple.
Is this going to require more paving put in, or just rearranging of the lines?
Really, just the right turn lane on Watt Road north of Kingston Pike. If you're headed south on Watt Road toward Kingston Pike from the interstate, it will open up to an additional 12-foot lane.
Those triple southbound will help quite a bit with your stacking. That should address Rural Metro's concerns.
Yes. Yep.
That is one good thing with this. We'll be able to modify the signal timing some, so that some movements can happen opposite each other instead of just having a completely split phase. It ought to operate a lot more efficiently.
I don't like that at Wiggles. Tonight, for instance, when I came, I couldn't go anywhere because somebody coming off Kingston Pike had turned too soon, so it had traffic backed up at least one car before you ever got to the, and I witnessed several almost accidents because people being nice, and I hate nice drivers because they create problems.
Yes, they do.
But I've almost seen, I've seen a couple of times, people almost hit sideways because people coming from down, going towards Kingston Pike, they don't see them. They don't even look for them. Is there any way you can avoid something like that?
We can create more separation between driveways and intersections. And that was the challenge with Wiggles years ago when we approved that. It was a real battle.
It really was.
It is a poor design. It just is what it is, though. I mean, that's ultimately what got approved. But that's the reason why we have so much separation requirement between driveways and intersections, to avoid disasters like that.
Because that's a prime example of why we require that.
Yeah. But that would fix, if it had 400 feet in there, it would be a non-issue.
That's correct.
You got else, any questions or comments?
I'm going to move to approve.
Well, he already made the motion.
Oh, we did?
Daryl made the motion.
Oh, well, I didn't make it. I just suggested.
Can Daryl make the motion?
No, he asked for approval.
Yeah, he can't do that.
So was the motion on the floor is to approve, and do we have a second?
Yeah, a second, yeah.
All righty.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I thought I had new phone powers.
Item number five, approval of roadway improvements at the intersection of North Campbell Station Road and Snyder Road, Town of Farragut, applicant.
This is a project we've just added to our CIP in the last year. This is an aerial view of the intersection as it is right now. Back around 2012, when Knox County completed the extension of Snyder Road and Outlet Drive to create that, it's a great connection between Campbell Station and Level Road on the north side of the interstate. It created a problem in that the left turn movement from Snyder Road onto southbound Campbell Station, that's a pretty popular movement. And Noah Allison reminds me on a weekly basis of what a problem that can be, how it backs up. Fact is, it's just a very heavy movement.
Common to take three cycles to get through there in the afternoon gym.
Our intention here is to extend the westernmost southbound lane on Campbell Station. Right now, at that intersection, there's only one southbound lane. This will extend, we'll have a double southbound lane on Campbell Station in order to provide a double left turn off of Snyder Road. That'll make a much more efficient movement. I won't say that it will cut the queue in half, but it will certainly improve things. It's a fairly straightforward project. There's no right-of-way involved. We just want to do it this summer, and we'll make some minor adjustments to the signal and some of the signage and pavement marking, and should operate much better after that.
Now, the need is very timely, because we've got a call center going in in the old Outlet Mall building that will have, on the short term, 300 to 400 employees. It'll operate 16 hours a day to start with, eventually going to 24, and eventually to the proposed 800, possible 800 workers, if they take half the building.
And that's 300 employees that will all leave at the same time and hit this intersection?
It'll probably be about 150 to 200. It will be.
Shift change?
Yeah.
Shift change, okay.
So that was announced today by SOTL. So it's been going on for about 10 months. There's, so it's a done deal. It's a long-term deal, the contract that they've got with the Outlet Mall building.
Well, we had actually asked for a double left turn at that intersection back when it was under construction. And as it was Knox County paying for all of the construction, it's best not to look a gift horse in the mouth. They just said, "Not right now. We're good." So.
Timing's great right now.
Yeah.
Very good right now. So staff recommendation is approval.
So will Knox County be paying, helping for this?
Oh, no, no, this is ours. That'd be great, but no.
It's not going to be that expensive a project.
It's really not.
Considering road projects.
We've budgeted $260,000 for construction. I feel like that, I'm very comfortable with that number. Now, I will say that on a project, this is a relatively small project.
Yeah. With a powerful impact.
Yes. Some of the item costs, the item unit prices, they can be pretty volatile on a small project. But I feel comfortable with what we have budgeted now.
Okay. I will add, this was added during our budget reading process. This was added as well as the pedestrian-activated signal at Grigsby Chapel. So I'm thrilled, because sometimes government tends to move a little slowly, but this one is moving, so.
When right-of-way is not involved, it moves really fast.
Yes.
And if it's just our own, our project with nobody else involved, we can do it.
Don't have to ask permission from anybody. Yep. This is great. So thank you, Daryl, for the speed at which, this relative speed at which this is moving.
Relative speed, yes.
Daryl, I have a question here. On the drawing that we have, it looks like there's a sidewalk along the roadway where the widening occurs. It's kind of not shown while I'm drawing.
It's not shown on there. I can ask them to show it. We believe we can tie it in.
My question is, are we, we're bringing that, we're removing some of the buffer between the sidewalk and the main street there. Are we still got an adequate distance there between the sidewalk?
I think so, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody in the audience? In that case, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Daryl. You got your business cut out for you. Item number six, discussion in public hearing on a request for a zoning map amendment to change the zoning of a portion of parcel 005, tax map 151 501, North Watt Road, from agricultural aid to neighborhood/convenient commercial. NCC 5.2 acres, approximately half in the town, half in the county. Richard Cox and Catherine Cox, applicants.
Before I get started, the applicant is here, and we actually just now got the boundary survey, and he's going to pass that around for you all. It's a little bit interesting, because more of the property than we thought is in the town, actually.
Oh, wow.
That's one of the reasons why we were kind of stickler about the boundary survey on this one, is the property is actually, appears to be bisected by three different jurisdictions, the towns, Knox County, and then a little bit Loudon County on the west side. But this survey that we're passing around doesn't appear to show any portion of it in Loudon County. I'm not sure if that's, I assume that's accurate. It's a good surveyor that did this, that has been doing it for a long time. So just again, as a little background on this, we did talk about this last month as a workshop item. And what they're requesting, as we also talked about, we've amended the future land use map along the Watt Road corridor. And this particular property was amended to mixed-use neighborhood as the land use. It's kind of right at the entrance to the town as you're going south on North Watt Road. It's the last parcel, actually, on the north side of, on North Watt Road on the west side before you leave the town. And so it's kind of a gateway parcel. It's, you know, could be kind of a good introduction development as you're coming into the town. And what they're requesting to rezone this to is the Neighborhood Convenience Commercial District, which we created last year. And actually, that is the most consistent zoning district with what is now the future land use designation for this property, the mixed-use neighborhood. So the staff does recommend approval of this rezoning. It is shown as exhibit, let's see, it's ordinance 19-04, and the staff does recommend approval of ordinance 19-04 through resolution PC-19-02.
Does the applicant have anything they want to say?
If you do.
We need to get up to the microphone, if you do, please.
Yeah.
They can't hear you at home on TV.
Or C.
If you will, give us your name and your address.
Richard Cox. Address is 11420 Old Colony Parkway, Farragut. The only comment I was going to make was that our application would seem to be completely consistent with the land use plan that, as I understand, was approved in the spring. So I guess, in that sense, it would seem to be a slam dunk.
Mr. Cox, what is the portion that's in Knox County? What is that zone? Are you aware of that, or?
Our intent, and Knox County has agreed, that once Farragut gives their stamp of approval to a rezoning, that they will go along with that rezoning.
It's currently zoned agriculture in Knox County. Same as it's zoned in the town.
All right, just curious.
And Knox County has somewhat of a similar zoning district, called the Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District.
Okay. Very good to know, because I in fact intended, but was too busy today, to call them and ask them if they had a similar.
The only thing is, they're limited in size to 5,000 square feet buildings.
That's true.
Ours is limited to.
25,000.
25,000. So, yeah, you should be aware of that. If they're willing to go with our zoning, which is fine by me, wonderful, we have, we're more lax on the size of the building than they are for their neighborhood commercial. You should just be aware of that.
Okay, very good. The other aspect of that is the, from what my realtor has told me, they're willing to go along with it, but for a rather hefty fee.
Their application fees are a lot higher than ours.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm going to move to approve resolution PC-19-02.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, appreciate the update on the survey. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number eight. We have postponed item number seven, remember? Of a resubdivision plat of 12017 West Kingsgate Road, provide for a street connection from the Brookmere subdivision to Westgate Road. Point 360 R-2 Homestead Land Property, Homestead Land Holdings applicant.
Well, sorry, wrong one. Had two homesteads, one was not ready. Okay. So this is just a workshop discussion. Really, the applicant's trying to obtain some early feedback from you all with regards to vehicular public street access from Brookmere subdivision, which is under construction off Virtue Road, to Kingsgate subdivision. This came up when we reviewed the concept plan for Brookmere back in March. And as you may remember, there were a number of variances requested at that time. One of those was to eliminate the required second point of vehicular public street access and make it basically an emergency-only access with bollards. And so we looked at, there is a public street that's actually constructed that stubs into the Brookmere property. That's Grinstead Road in Kingsgate. But I'm not sure why it was stubbed in that location, because when you look at it topographically and in terms of tree cover, it was deemed to be a poor connection point, particularly in the zoning district that Brookmere is the open space residential. So the developer tried to pursue buying a lot in Kingsgate that would be more topographically favorable east of Grinstead Road. And that lot is at 12017 West Kingsgate Road. And it, as part of the variance request, again, at the time, it was, you know, the request was just to have this as emergency-only. But the staff recommended that this be ultimately a full public street access, to be consistent with our comprehensive land use plan. As you all know from a lot of discussion in the past few years, connectivity or the lack thereof is a big issue. People are going to make the trips, and if you give them more options, you have a better flow of your overall transportation system. You don't overload any one street. You provide better emergency service. In fact, the secondary access is a requirement also in the fire code if you have more than 30 lots, unless you sprinkle the houses. So that was another reason why this secondary access was pursued, in addition to it being now a requirement in our subdivision regulations. So when this came up for action at the concept plan level, both the staff and Planning Commission certainly are sensitive to adding this street into Kingsgate, because it's an area that wasn't planned for a street when Kingsgate was originally developed. But we didn't want to preclude the possibility of that happening in the future. So the motion that was made was to deny the variance, to not allow, not have it as a full public street, but to revisit how we want to deal with that at the preliminary and final plat stage, when that comes before you all. So at this time, the developer has purchased that lot, and they're proceeding with a resubdivision plat, but they wanted some direction on how to treat this street and how to deal with the lot they purchased. There's an existing house on the lot, and, you know, what you're all's feelings were on those items. So in looking at this, the staff put together just some questions that, or discussion points that we thought of. There may be certainly other ones to look at on this. What's proposed on your screen there, that was just kind of a preliminary submittal. It does show an 18-foot street with a 25-foot public right-of-way. And when you have a public right-of-way, that becomes your new property line, so everything has to be set back from those property lines. And it can affect, you know, setbacks, lot coverage, lots of things. So one of the questions was dealing with what would be an adequate width for this connector street. In talking with the fire marshal, it would have to be a minimum of 20 feet, and that would require a variance from the street width. Currently, that would have to be 26 feet, unless you obtained a variance to go lower. The staff would support the variance when they do submit that with a resubdivision plat, because again, to lessen the width of that facility also lessens the impact to Kingsgate. Makes it look less of a, more like a driveway as opposed to a public street. So I don't know if you all had any questions or thoughts on the street width, if that sounds acceptable to you all. That's the minimum that could comply with the fire code, so if you all think. So if you all think they need a wider facility, I think they need some direction. But the staff is very comfortable with 20 feet.
Is the boulevard park coming in from the front of the subdivision? What is the width of those streets?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Because it's a boulevard.
The one ways.
One ways.
So that wouldn't qualify with the fire code?
Right.
No, and even if this were just an emergency access only, it still would have to be 20 feet wide.
When we discussed it with Dan here, one of the staff developers, he agreed with 18, but I guess he went back and reviewed the code again and came back at 20. So we're, I think we're okay with 20. If that's what the code requires, that's what we'll put in there. But that's why I didn't show it as 20 on the plan, because we had discussed 18.
Yeah, I think he looked at that a little further, and that was apparently for a one-way situation.
Mark, if we agree to just do an easement instead of right-of-way, does that still require the variances?
It would require far fewer variances than if it's a public right-of-way.
If we agree to an easement with the 20 feet, what variances do we need to approve?
Well, you need to approve the street width variance, as I mentioned earlier. Maybe a variance from the requirement for, no, it's not really, it's not a private street, so I'd have to look at the language in the subdivision regulations to see if you would maybe need a variance for a street that's not platted as a public right-of-way. We can get to that here in a minute. But I've talked with Tom Hale about this, and, I mean, I know you can do an easement. We have them all over town. It's just, in this case, this particular space would be maintained by the town.
By the town.
And we would have the liability in that physical space. So, and that's not an issue. We would just have to be clear in, you know, how we work up the covenants and the plat notes and plat language to make sure that it's very clear in that regard.
And I'm not clear, do we have a pedestrian facility here or not?
Well, what this would be, and that's a question, you know, do you need a pedestrian facility? The way the staff envisions this space and the kind of the way we talked about it when it was reviewed at the concept plan level is that it would really function as a multimodal facility. There's no sidewalks in Kingsgate, unfortunately. But this facility, and if we need to acknowledge it in some fashion with striping or whatever, is to be, you know, vehicle and however else you want to use it, bicycle, you know, whatever. So it's a way for people to get in, you know, to that Kingsgate subdivision and more than just a car, if they want to, to get connected between the two.
Okay, so just for clarity, that 20-foot stretch is intended to be a multimodal?
Multimodal space, yes.
I think it's also important to point out that it's less than 500 feet in length. So I've been referring to it as a connector road. It's connecting one road to another road. It's not kind of its own road. There's, other than the one house, existing home would be the only driveway off of it, and it's, you know, not far from the existing Kingsgate Road where their driveway is. So it's, I wouldn't be comfortable with any of this if it was, you know, 1,000 feet long or something like that, but being...
I understand.
Town approved the roadway only or the modal, the pavement part only, not the whole lot?
Well, we would plat it as, you know, a multimodal facility, but any public street you can bicycle on.
I meant to say maintain, just the roadway, not the whole lot.
We will, the town will take over maintenance, just like we do on walking trails that are...
It's basically like a wide walking trail, is how we're treating it, in terms of the town's responsibility. It would be worded in the language, dealing with the covenants and the plats, in that same manner.
But unlike a walking trail, this will be foundationed for a street.
Yeah. Have the cross-section, the composition of a public street. You know, the, wouldn't be a two-inch asphalt surface and six-inch base like a walking trail. It would be the cross-section of a local street under construction.
I guess one question to ask, and you actually pointed it out, was whether or not you would want it curbed. Again, tying into trying to make it not, Kingsgate obviously curbed, but it's been resurfaced, the curves aren't as tall, they're not as pronounced as the curbs we put in today are much larger.
Yeah, that's a question I think that, you know, you all might need, might want to weigh in on, whether you...
Does it need stormwater infrastructure? Does it?
No, I think we could work that out with swells. Those lots are fairly flat right there. As it gets onto our development back there, we obviously have more flexibility to swell on both sides of it, to channel drainage down to our stormwater system in our development. But as far as Lot 23 and the adjacent 24 and that portion of the road there in Kingsgate, it's relatively flat. There's, I'll take a closer look at it, but I don't remember seeing anything that I would be worried about enormous amounts of runoff, so.
It would be more maintenance for the town, because if you veer off, you're going to rut, cause ruts, and, I mean, there's more opportunity for maintenance issues if it's uncurved.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we need to not forget the spirit of the connectivity directive that we're working under. And I think if it looks more and more like a driveway, people aren't going to use it. And the spirit of the connectivity is that if your residents, they want to head over to Anchor Park, this gives them a way to get over to Anchor Park without necessarily having to get back on Virtue Road. On the inverse, if somebody in Kingsgate wants to go to Watt Road, this gives them an opportunity to have a rather circuitous, but also a different way to be able to get to Watt Road. So I don't, I think curbs are important. I think I'm comfortable with the 20 feet. I'm comfortable with the easement. I do have some concerns about the distance from, we'll call it, the edge of asphalt to the existing house, and how that would be dealt with. And if those folks have friends that want to come over and hang out on, watch Superbowl, where are those folks going to park? Because I don't think there's going to be enough distance in the driveway, and then they're going to be stacking out in this street that's 20 feet wide. So I think there's some other issues that we got to work through. We do appreciate the fact that you're trying to find an alternative way, and you've found a real innovative way of doing it, albeit it's expensive to have to go buy a lot and deal with a house and so forth. But it is a way to be able to meet the spirit of what we're talking about. But I don't think it should just absolutely look like a driveway. I think it somewhat needs to look like a public street that folks can use, both your residents and adjacent residents.
Could we post it, no parking on that?
Well, yeah, we could sure post it.
West Kingsgate is 26 feet wide. It certainly can handle parking on that road.
And that's where all the residents' friends park now, all in Kingsgate.
Well, I agree, but if you got the folks that live in Lot 23, and when their guests or invitees come over, where are their guests' invitees going to park? I don't know, but we just need to think about these things.
Sure.
Obviously, if there is no house on Lot 23, it's a non-issue. Or if you tear down the house and build a different house on it and configure the house with a little more usable driveway, then that should address it. But absolutely to go with Louise's comment, we could definitely post it, no parking, because really, a 20-foot wide road really is not wide enough to park on one side. 26 feet does allow parking on one side and still two-way traffic on the balance of the road.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to reiterate what you're saying. I went on and took a look at that, and it looks to me that when you put the road in, as shown here, especially when you do the 20 feet, you don't, you have about 17 feet from the garage door to the street curb. A pickup truck is 17 feet long or 18 feet long. You'll have a truck parked in the driveway with a bumper in the street. So it's really, really tight there. I think that's, I think that's a big problem, actually.
If you center 20 feet in a 30-foot easement, you'll have 17 foot 10 inches to the garage door, to the building.
How much?
17 feet 10 inches. So 17.78 feet.
And a big pickup truck is 18 and 19 feet. So you want him to have a driveway big enough?
That'd be your bumper touching the garage door.
That gives you a foot for that.
Could the garage be reconfigured to be a?
Front entry?
Like front entry?
The topography probably doesn't allow for it there, does it?
Structure doesn't.
Structure doesn't.
Yeah, I looked at it, too.
Thought in mind, is there any option on the other side of Lot 24 to take some of that lot, three feet or four feet or anything like that, to get an easement there or to buy that, a strip of property over there? Is that an option at all?
No.
They have no interest in cooperating?
Yeah.
No, I can understand that.
Understand.
The good news, the house on Lot 23, I drove by, I mean, it's not the Taj Mahal. I mean, it is, it's in okay condition, but it's not in stellar condition.
No, it's serviceable, it's savable, and that's the reason why we're bringing this now, because we're nowhere near ready to, for preliminary plans for Phase Two, which was, would be when this connection would be required, is so we can determine the fate.
If you want to put some money in Lot 23, or...
Put 40K into it.
That's what you kind of, that's what you feel like it needs to be updated?
If we get this approved, we're going to put 40K into the place.
Well, that still doesn't address the driveway issue.
Right, no.
Bob, we're, I hate to do this, we're going to have to get you up to the microphone. We got to get you on the record.
What if you move the, what if you move the actual 20-foot to the west edge of the property, to basically, you put the...
And tell us who you are.
Asymmetrical, it's not centered in the easement. You bring it, because you need a little bit of curvature in that straightaway anyway.
I'm not following you, Mark.
Well, it's basically just...
Just center it in the 30 feet.
Okay, you're saying cheat it over, cheat it up against the property line.
So you get 20-foot driveway off of it.
And you also get a little curvature, which you need.
Which would help.
I've been thinking about that when I read this.
Now, Mark, I'm looking at those property pins. It looks like you're on the neighbor's lot right there.
He's being dramatic there.
It's kind of a wide swath there.
I'm not sure the neighbor is going to be too happy about you going through their lot, but those round circles typically, those are property pins, and so...
Yeah. Well, actually, one of them's a water meter, I think, but I think...
That dash line is the property line.
The dash line?
No.
Or, is that a setback? Usually, those are like setbacks.
Setback. See, the other problem with the right-of-way is you'd be imposing a building setback on 24.
And that's why I'm okay with the easement. And I think I'm comfortable with the easement.
Well, I think the point is to try to bring it down as far to the west as you can.
Mark, I still think you're on the neighbor's lot there.
Well, I might be, but you know what I'm talking about.
But you have a centered easement.
I can get it over 3 feet.
That's what I'm thinking. If you move it over and move it away from that, stay in the easement, but move it right around that driveway.
What do we try to do minimum on edge of right-of-way to a garage door? 20 or 30? I know, so we have some different zoning districts allow different things.
19 the depth of a typical parking space in a parking lot.
So you're thinking if they could figure out a way to get 20 feet from the edge of asphalt?
Yeah, that would be, that'd be fine, yeah.
If we get 20 feet to the edge of asphalt to the garage door?
So we need to slide the road over 3 feet into the easement, and we'll still have 2 feet on the other edge.
And that would also give a little bit of curvature to that, otherwise, real straight section there.
I'll go for that.
I'm comfortable, if you can get 20 feet.
We can get 20 feet in a 30-foot easement.
Now, is that kind of the edge of the framing line, or like, because the garage doors are usually inset inside? I'm just saying, you really need to get a real 20 feet.
It's from brick.
Okay, from brick, even better. Even better.
It's from the surveyor's asbill, which he just shot whatever he drew on.
He just shot the footprint.
Yeah, I've just got a box.
If you get 20, you can get 20 feet out to the edge of asphalt, or, I mean, obviously, you got some, you got, if you got curbs, it'd be nice to have back a curb. And that way, if you do, if somebody does have a long bed pickup truck in there, you know, they can at least get the entire truck on the driveway.
And we're not opposed to plating. Let's do no parking on it. I'd rather have, I'm Bob Moni with Homestead Land Holdings.
122 Perimeter Park Road, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's post it, no parking. We would actually like no parking on that.
I would agree.
I mean, you want it to look nice. I mean, you're going to have some of your residents coming through there. I mean, you want it to look nice, and you don't want to be all crowded, little tight entrance.
The cars there with emergency vehicles coming through.
Yeah.
That's the concern.
That's a concern.
It's not the intention of it. It's not the intention to have parking there.
Well, you want, how are we doing working on these items here? We've talked about public right-of-way or easement.
I mentioned one thing, and Bart mentioned this, if you push that street over to the property line, we just need to make sure that the town can maintain, do whatever we do, need to do to maintain it, and have the rights to do that, and not...
What do we feel like is the minimum from the back of curb to the edge of, the edge of the easement that the town would be comfortable with?
What is it we need to do? Can you delineate exactly?
Are you doing any utility connections in Kingsgate?
Yeah.
You're going to loop the water, maybe? Water, that's it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, what I was proposing in there was a 30-foot easement total.
If you put that water on the east side.
Yeah.
If it's centered, obviously, it'd be five feet on each side of the...
Can you have two feet on one side and in a certain location, and eight on the other, and still do what you need to do?
And we could curve it and have three, push it over three feet and then bring it back to the center once we pass that residence.
You pass the garage.
Because there's no other driveways on it.
If it's curved and it's relatively at grade and relatively flat, I don't know what, really, how much room behind the curb you need to maintain.
Well, if you're not trying to get utilities over there, and quite frankly, there's implied utility easements on every property line anyway.
Right, right. But not a vehicle.
But, right, right.
I think we would need to have a discussion, you know, internally with Bud and Daryl, just to make sure. But if, you could kind of, yeah, propose to swing it over, like where that potential conflict point is.
And I think, too, even if you've got 50 feet of an connector road, that is less than ideal room for maintenance on one side, but you can still tear up the road and replace it if you have to in 50 years, then you've got 50 feet of a road that's less than ideal space on one side. If they're concerned about getting their five-foot-wide bush hog down there to mow a one-foot grass strip, you know, it's kind of like, well, you know, just deal with that. You can hit that with a weed eater, it's only 50 feet.
Yeah, they typically weed eat that.
If you got room to add like an apron, you know, for this house lot, too, to give them a little bit of another area to...
A pull-off or another parking.
On the property might be...
I do have room for that, yeah.
Yeah, that might help, so, kind of like what you were talking about.
I mean, probably the backyard would be the easiest place to put that, just slide if you, you know...
I've got room within, I've got room within the side of the house to do that, too.
Okay.
I'm laughing, because the neighbor next door has about six boats and two Conexes.
There's all sorts of stuff in that backyard. I looked at it on KGIS first before I went out there, and I was like, wow, they got a lot of stuff in the backyard.
Yeah, we're looking into that.
We asked Mark if there were any ordinance that...
It didn't look like it's a very clean swimming pool, though, on KG, on the aerial photos. I wouldn't want to be in that pool, so.
So, okay, we'll try to look at that, and we'll talk with Daryl and Bud about that as far as maintenance.
So we don't have to pass any variances tonight? This is just for discussion.
You're looking for some direction. Is there, are there any other items, Russ or Bob, that you guys want to work through tonight for direction from this commission?
I think one thing I would like to see is, as some protection with Lot 24, if they're not removing the house on 23, is to help with some buffering, or if that person wants it.
Well, they've got some buffering on their property already.
Sounds like they have plenty of vehicles for buffering.
It's the neighbor on the west, he's the neighbor on the east.
So you think they're...
Now, the downside on 24, the problem is, if you try to go over there and plant anything, you're going to be on their lot. You're not going to have any distance between the curb and the edge of this easement to do that, so...
Two feet at best.
Right.
But they do have buffering.
There are some trees out there.
Yeah. Do they have a fence down there?
I don't, I don't think so.
They've got trees, though, for sure.
Yeah. They've got trees for sure.
Yeah, as far as other things, I mean, the conflict with the existing garage was a major issue that we wanted to talk about. And then I think another one is just to try to work with Kingsgate and, similar to what we have done, what we would do with Saddle Ridge with Pecos, and that is to not fully open this up, keep it as a temporary, you know, emergency access only for a certain term, and then after...
You're saying, talking about a build-out after a certain number of houses are occupied?
Certain build-out or something, so that, you know, there's less likelihood of...
You'd probably like to see that, quite frankly.
For security reasons, that's a good idea.
Yeah, we would like that.
So, yeah, if we could get that, and so it will be bollered off for some timeframe, and then we'll get with Dan Johnson and Bob and others and figure out when would be an appropriate time to go ahead and open it up and make it a full, full public street, so...
If, I want to ask this, so we don't get surprised. I asked Mark at the staff meeting, can we... I asked Mark at the staff meeting, can we bollard it off? Since I have to access my, the side of the garage for those people when I fix up this house, can I bollard that street off past the driveway instead of at the intersection?
Oh, that makes sense. Yeah, that makes sense. So it'd go down, down the hill towards the, the property line between the two developments and bollard it there instead of up at the top. And that way, he can still use, he can, this will be somebody's driveway for a period of time, and then it'll convert into a road, a street.
And then, and so, and then just to make clear, so that when we come back, swing the road, design the road so we got 20 feet.
Uh-huh. From that kind of edge of brick to the back of curb.
And then, and then I would like you all to vote to post it, no parking. I'd like that to be kind of the part of it.
I'd like to see a 20-foot road, no parking also.
I would agree.
Yeah. Mark, if you'll make a note of that when it comes back, we'll just...
I'll make a note. I'll put, I'll put some signs on the, on the plan, no parking signs on the plan.
Probably going to want one in both going north and south. Yeah, both directions.
Uh, one thing to think about, if the, the radius, the turning radius, I'm always a big fan of a tight radius. I'm never a big fan of some big sweeping radius. But if you have a school bus that might use this, for example, um, we need to think about that a little bit, because a 15-foot, normally I'd be totally in favor of a 15-foot radius, but...
You're talking about the curb returns at the time.
They should be, if they just take it real wide, they should be fine. Being, being it's not heavily trapped, I mean, that's a cul-de-sac, and quite frankly, that's kind of the end of Kingsgate, the far west end. Shouldn't, you really shouldn't have a lot of traffic to, that prohibit a school bus from taking a real wide turn around those.
I would really be surprised to hear that a school bus was going to utilize that.
Yeah, I would be, too.
Really?
Yeah.
I mean, that's kind of the idea of our connectivity. We're trying to let these school buses interconnect.
I, I think of how they handle neighborhoods. They look at things from a neighborhood point of view, and they won't, they won't even come back that far. They'll have a, they'll come up and swing around because you have...
Bring your kids down to Virtue Road.
Well, they may do that, but they may, if they're big enough, they'll come into the neighborhood, but they look for a way to, you have that ability to kind of make a loop up there at the top. And I think that that's probably...
Yeah, we do.
And then they'll walk, they'll walk the rest away.
Yeah.
Want to use it to be able to get, you know, both neighborhoods on one school bus. I, I think, my instinct, this is fine.
The bigger question is, is Dan's trucks.
Yeah. Who's, oh, yeah, the fire trucks, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think he's going to be okay with the 15-foot.
Well, I, I think they can do it. They just have to swing wide for it.
If something's on fire, they'll get on the road.
Yeah.
Right, even if they have to drive over the curb, they'll, you know, they'll get to it.
We'll patch the ruts if they save a house from burning down, so we'll...
But ultimately, I guess Dan's got to put his seal of approval on it.
Well, part, part of the problem about the radius, now, obviously, we control the one side on Lot, on, on the lot we own. But on Lot 24, you start widening that radius, and you got to slide that road over into the house so that you're not taking part in that problem.
Frankly, if anybody ever came in, they're going to be coming in from the east.
Yes, that's exactly right.
They're not going to be coming in from the west. And so even if you had to, it might look a little funny, but you probably really wouldn't see...
I think you'd want a little bit wider radius on the north.
On your Lot 23.
Yeah.
Maybe 20 or 25 there, but 15 on the other, because like Noah said, nobody's, I mean, very few people are going to be going right out of that street.
And even a school bus probably wouldn't go that way either.
No, no. So...
So what are you...
So what we're saying is we're comfortable with 15 on the, on, on the Lot 24. Why don't you see if you maybe get us a 20 on Lot 23? And I don't think you would, standing in the road, I don't think you'd ever even notice the difference between those two.
Whatever, Dan, yeah.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, you might want to check with Dan on that. Make sure Dan's, I don't want you to design around 20, and Dan says, I want a 25.
Yeah.
Well, he'll, he'll be reviewing this.
Yes.
Yeah. And that's, that's something that, if he wants to make a change, we can, we can approve subject two. And I can do that before, yeah.
I think that was the major comments that I wanted to bring up, the easement width, the street width, um, fact that it would be an easement rather than a public right-of-way. So does anybody else have any, any questions? Or do y'all need any more clarification on anything?
No, we're good.
Pretty well covered it.
Yeah, I think I'm good.
There will be, so I, I believe they're going to be submitting a re-subdivision plat for next time, right?
Yeah, since we had already submitted the, the plat for Lot 23, and then this exhibit that is kind of a, a revision to the concept, we'll just revise those two based on the meeting tonight as a revision to get on the February agenda so that we can...
Go on with your next phase, included in.
Well, with, the, the house on Lot 23 is, you know, nobody's living there. You, you let those things set for too long and they start, you, you have more problems. So we just, we, we want something, you know, recorded on that lot so that we can move forward with, with improving that house and be able to sell it with a, a known...
Right.
...encumbrance there, so...
Right. Makes sense.
Thank you all.
Have you folks had any discussion with the owner of Lot 24?
Not yet. I called once over there, they did not return my phone call. So I think I'm just going to go knock on their door and talk to them.
I think that would be a kind thing to do.
On the west side.
No.
No, the other one, the other side.
Do you know them?
Did you want to have anything to say? She's, she's a resident in Kingsgate, she may want to see.
We're going to have to have, have you, get you, come up and put you on the, on the record. Any discussion? We'd love, we'd love, obviously, if you're a resident, we, we, you know, we'd, we'd love to hear for, hear your discussion and your concerns and...
My concerns, you have an I one?
We, if we can get your name and address for the record, we sure would appreciate that.
My name is Jan Albright, 12029 West Kingsgate.
All right, Ms. Albright.
Okay, can you tell us how, where your property sits compared to what we're talking about here?
Two?
I think she's about seven lots.
It's, uh...
South.
The lot that you were talking about, the Frank Housers?
Southwest.
There's one after that, Jim, Jim.
The people you know.
Well, I know them all. I know who I'm living with. And they didn't, they couldn't come tonight. I was going to get them to come tonight. No, there was, there's the Frank Housers, then Jabonski, and then us.
Three lots over.
Three lots over.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. My, my, I talked to the Frank Housers, and they have a fence around their yard, and they, they're the ones, I think you said that they won't give it, they won't give an inch. They're the ones, yep. They, that's what she told me. And I said, how are they going to get a driveway in between the two houses? Because I stood there and I said to my husband, I said, look, how can they get a, a room between the two houses without, without honing in on their driveway? That's my question. And also, about what time would this be? My question is, about what time would this road possibly be happening?
We'd probably build it at Phase Two.
Well, while your, while your contractors mobilize, it makes sense to do it then.
Well, yeah, yeah, but we're not even, yeah, when we're doing Phase Two.
Right, and during Phase Two.
So, so two years, a year and a half, two years.
Two years.
A year and a half, maybe.
Two years, maybe two and a half.
No, a year and a half to two years.
No. See what I mean? You have an hour.
It's construction and, and weather.
Yeah, weather. We pray for rain, okay. Are you actually going to keep that home there the whole time?
Yes.
Well, that's what we've been discussing tonight.
As soon as we improve next month, we're going to fix the home up.
And somebody's going to live there?
Yes.
And you're going to put a dry, a room, right?
Yes.
But it's, it, that's what we've been, it, it is a narrower than normal road.
That's why I can't believe it. I mean, I can't really see that the way it is.
Mark, maybe you could highlight the footprint of the house on Lot 23. It's kind of shadowed.
23, is that the one that's 17?
That's the one that they own.
Don't put me in the picture.
And so that's what we're discussing tonight. So this is a, it's a, it is a narrower...
Here you go.
Let's take our picture together. Let's take our picture together.
On the knife right here? No, I'm kidding. I'll give you cookies. What kind would you like?
Chocolate chip. Or oatmeal.
That's cool.
All right.
Can I, do I have to say?
Mrs. Albright, what, what he's drawn in green, and you're welcome to come look at my screen if you'd like to, that gives you the outline, the footprint of the house on Lot 23 that they own. And that would be the house that they'd be saving. And what we talked about tonight is jogging this road over to the west, it's kind of southwest, but sliding it over slightly to give a little bit more room when somebody pulls into that driveway.
Is it a little bit room?
Well, right. I mean, it's, it's...
Is this the fence, that dotted thing?
Uh, well, that's actually a set, it's a, it's a setback. And so I don't, I can't, I think the fence is probably closer to the property line. I don't, is there a, I didn't remember a fence being back there. I remember the trees. Is it a chain link fence?
Yeah.
Okay, cha, there might be a chain link fence, okay. I didn't, I, I drove by, I didn't, I didn't walk it, but I did drive by. And so, but the, the chain link fence is probably, typically folks put it near their property line. So that, yes, but it is a narrower than typical road. Even a neighborhood road, it is narrower than the roads in your neighborhood. Well, it's about 6, 6 feet narrower in, in to overall width.
Are you talking about the street?
Yes, ma'am. The, the actual street, the asphalt that you'll see constructed there.
And basically, the purpose of that street is for emergency vehicles to be able to get in the other, the new development.
Well, and in the event that your development had a traffic tie-up, it would allow another way for emergency vehicles or you to be able to get out. But the other idea behind just emergency vehicles is that if you wanted to go, think about where you are in Kingsgate, and if you wanted to go to Fox Den to play golf, or you wanted to go get on the interstate at Watt Road, or go to the Ace Hardware down at Dixie Lee Junction, think of the route that you now have to take to go all the way out on Kings to Pike or over to Turkey Creek Road.
No, we could go through Midhurst, and now there's a shortcut to Turkey Creek.
That's true, but this would actually give you a direct route to Virtue Road.
I'm retired. I don't have to go back.
But there, there is other reasons why, why we try to...
It's not a virtue road anyway, it's just too...